To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, do you have any comments or suggestions?
Maybe Bratzos is our first question. Hello. Good evening. My name is Nene Bratzos and I am the KMS new PTO president. And I'm Lisa Brawl and I'm the KMS secretary. And just about a month ago, I was at the school committee meeting when the first, the first time it was brought up about the field trip funding and how we cannot require parents to pay for field trips. So the first big field trip coming up was Nature's Classroom. So I just wanted to kind of give the school committee and everyone an update on where we are. A month ago, thinking we had 250 students going, the cost of the trip was going to be about $90,000. And at this point, we have brought the costs way down. One on the number of kids going, way down, I think there's about 170. We've received a grant from Nature's Classroom. We've switched bus companies for another costing things. So we are now only about $6,000 to our goal to actually make this trip happen in less than a month. And that is thanks to so many people in our community. Many parents have donated, a lot of businesses and people in the community are sponsoring their child at a cost of $325 a student. We're doing some small fundraisers, restaurant nights, things like that. So we're getting very close to our goal, so I just wanted to give you an update. We have, I don't know, maybe about three weeks until the trip. So we just need a little bit more money. And these seventh graders that have been waiting to go on this trip for so long will hopefully get to go. We just need one last push to kind of make it happen. So I just wanted to give you a little update. We're almost there.
I think it's okay to make like a general comment. So usually because it's not on the agenda, we're not supposed to have an interaction, which I know makes it so difficult. It's so bad. See, I, of course, because I want to say yes.
If your question is how can you donate? We have no funding page. You can also write checks, scramble to KMS ETO. I don't know if that was a question, but... Oh, okay. I don't know the total number of students, but I think about 50 did not go last year. And this year, it's closer to 70 not going. They did fill out a form and I haven't seen the forms, but they were, parents were asked to give a reason why they didn't want to go. So I'm not sure if parents filled it out why their children didn't want to go, why they didn't want to send them. So I'm sure they'll gather that for future use. Thank you. Oh, yes. We are dead, we're dead inside.
Everybody has a check, so it's either going to be cash or brown paper bag.
No, it's cash too.
Or tell me the GoFundMe page.
You've got a way to check.
KMS saved Nature's Classroom.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't know you were all speaking together, but I won't announce this as well. Thank you all so much for all the hard work.
She has the same thing to say.
No, no, no.
Repeat it.
Thank you. Thanks for the hard work on that. So next order of business is to get a motion to seal the executive session minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? I get a motion to approve the September 23rd, 2019.
Motion to approve, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And next we have the superintendent's recommendations.
Yes, thank you. Our recommendation S-2019-65, that the school committee find a recommendation of superintendent supported by the legislative subcommittee, approve line item transfers for 2019.
Second. Discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
I don't know that you have the details in front of you, but a high-level summary was provided at the subcommittee meeting. We can get that out, as well as the details. But there were just about eight categories that were discussed. Some had line item adjustments, some did not. Compensation employee salary was one. Favorable budgetary balances within regular salary, substitute stipends, object code lines, to cover budgetary overages. So there were favorable budgetary balances in those lines. Are going to be used to cover budgetary overages for stipends to staff or professional development, compensation agreements with certified staff for class overage, class coverage, overtime for non-certified staff, and retirement payouts for employees who retired within FY19. Compensation for employee benefits, favorable budgetary balances within municipal employee retirement assistance. FICA, Medicare, tuition reimbursement, unemployment costs are going to go to cover budgetary overages within the retiree health premium lines because of higher anticipated post-employment benefits. Favorable budgetary balances within student assistance, what based on the level of contracted nursing conferences, workshops, are going to cover budgetary overages for officials, referee costs, additional needs for therapists, psychologists, supports for students processing costs from Medicaid, claims, and legal services. Favorable under purchased property, favorable budgetary balances within general repairs, non-technical labor repairs and groundskeeping services will be used to cover overages due to increased costs for telephone, wireless comms, ice cream rental costs, and other property services. Under other property services, favorable budgetary balances within out-of-district tuitions, printing and reimbursement, for employee travel, going to be used to cover overages within transportation due to increase in local and statewide transportation costs. There was nothing in property equipment. A little bit in supplies and maintenance to cover overages within custodial supplies, oil fuel costs, additional expenditures within non-public textbooks, what based on where to enroll them. There were some favorable balances in purchased professional services, covered budgetary overages for additional costs for dues, bank fees, and loan settlements. Quite a bit there. So again, we're looking at adjustments in compensation employee salary, employee benefits, purchased professional technical services, purchased property services, other purchase services, supplies and materials. To the total, Raquel, help me out. I'm looking at my numbers here. I'm trying to find, so I've got... I'm going to say 74,800?
Yeah, that's correct.
74,800 is the total amount for line item adjustments in those categories.
And just to know it nets out to zero year adds.
These are FY19.
They are. It's just to wrap up at the end of the year in preparation for the audit.
Dr. Bryce?
Yes, just one comment I would make is that these line item transfers are routine budgetary process that the district goes through every year to make sure that we end with zero-zero all across the lines. And so even though you identified eight or read through eight different categories, they're all routine expenses, expenses, nothing out of the ordinary that would cause us to have a level of concern.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And next up is our agenda focus, which is our XQ design team presentation. Welcome and thank you for coming.
So while our team comes, Dr. Fiasi and her Crackerjack team, I would just like to mention the importance of all across America, philanthropies, philanthropists, philanthropists and other organizations are looking at how to reimagine, rethink high schools. Bill Gates and his foundation, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, spent considerable amount of money trying to figure out how they can do high schools. This is another organization that's looking to work with schools in Rhode Island to redesign high schools. And what's critically important is to make sure that students have the skills that we do as parents and as educators, students need to have for the last century, while at the same time preparing them for 30, 40 years from now for technologies and experiences that we can't quite imagine, but we know are going to be vastly different than what we have. And so Deb and her team, Dr. Fiasi and her team are really at the forefront of helping us to reimagine what Mount Hope High School will look like.
Thanks. Is it all right with you if we kind of wander? Are you reading? Because my performance is... Can we wander? Is that okay? Good, good, good. Because we don't want you to work. So we're going to get started here. I'm going to have to walk back and put it in the notes for you. Unless Ryan gets my switch in for me. So I wanted to just take a second and if you could click it one more time, just introduce our core design team. Our core design team includes myself, a social studies teacher at the high school, Liz Johnson, Shayna Bloom, who is our career coordinator, Nikki Piper, who is a current community member, as well as Tom Driscoll, Nick Mandillo, who's a teacher. Tom Driscoll, you all know, is our technology ed coordinator, our educational technology coordinator. And also, which we're sorry to say, she's not here tonight, and I'll tell you why in a second, a student, Madison Rogers. Madison had a lot of homework to do tonight, and she is heading tomorrow to a seven o'clock train with Shayna to go to New York for a major national civil rights activist conference, who she was specifically invited by the XQ organization to go as a representative of a very handful of students that are going to be attending this conference. Do you want us to talk just in time a little bit about it?
You know, I got to say, guys, this is incredible. I mean, she's a great kid. She's a great student. When they gave me the call, Steve Osborne, who's the chief innovation drive, specifically called me on my cell and said that they had selected her. She's one of three in the state and only a handful in the country. The, from what I know, they're pretty hush-hush about it. Spike Lee and, these are her characters, gave me right now. Our Harry Delafonte are leading it. And Russell Inolli, as well as Lorraine Powell Jobs, it's their baby. And they're going to do a whole bunch of cool things with all sorts of activists from five generations. And then following this, what will be made in 2020, they will document these experiences. So, and much more is said, I don't know, but they paid to put everything up and it sounds like it's going to be quite an amazing affair.
Very cool, very cool. So that's why she's not here, and I'm really disappointed, but you will get a chance to hear her.
That is great.
Thank you, Ryan. So Dr. Bryce kind of elaborated a little bit about this. Why do we want to rethink high school? Why do we need to reimagine student experiences? And so we're just going to play this quick video.
This is America amazing. This is a car and a team, and a phone, and a high school. This is America amazing typically, and a car, and a phone, and a high school. This is today, a car, a phone, a high school. Whoa, badass. So cars are now this, and phones are now this, but high schools are still that. American high schools are based on the same model, and it's been over 100 years.
Wow, that's a long time.
But why? In 1900, it makes sense for high schools to prepare students for that. But in 2018, didn't they be preparing students for this, and this, and even this? So why are we still granting diplomas based on the time a student spends in a seat? Why are we still using the Carnegie, which was developed in 1906 and says the formula for learning is four years sitting at a desk multiplied by one subject taught at a time equals students ready for the future? All questions, execute super school project, ask Americans to help answer. There was a competition, not that kind of competition, this kind. The kind where communities across the country come together to rethink high school. So every student, everywhere, can be prepared for the future. And that's big, like really big. Like the largest open call in history to redesign a high school day. This is the hard work that went into it. 10,000 people across the country became school builders. And thanks to them, there will be brand new ways of teaching and learning. Starting with America's first super schools. Schools that will let students learn by doing, that focus on the future and spark curiosity. Schools that build community, unleash potential, and solve real-world problems. Schools that will ask their students what they think and will actually listen to. Students like me.
So the, those super schools that you just saw was the initiative that they started with last year. At the end of last year, they decided to come to Rhode Island specifically, partially because of all the work that Rhode Island is doing, the Great Work Program, Prepare RI, the Advanced Course Network, a lot of things that whoever is implemented, as well as the work that schools are doing. And the competition is, so to speak, in Rhode Island. And we were one of 20 schools or ideas for schools, because there are some folks that are creating new schools that were chosen in the state to receive a $25,000 planning grant in order to plan out what our reimagined high school would look like. Finished product is due the end of January. We should find out pretty soon after that. And it would be one of the schools to be awarded $500,000 to implement our mission over the course of the next three years. So it's pretty exciting stuff.
We'll take that $500,000.
Well, it's... No, you won't. No, you won't. But it's really exciting stuff. And we are going to win, but regardless, the work that we are doing is innovative, is creative. It is such good, really good work to be doing in the high school based on students, which is the best that we can do. So I'm going to turn it over to Shayna to talk, just to very briefly talk about XQ itself.
So people often ask, why XQ? And it is kind of, it's a little vague, but basically it's your IQ and your EQ, which, you know, came out as the whole emotional quotient thing. Bring them together and you get an XQ. So it's the X factor brought with that. But the concept really being that standing out, what can be bring to the schools, what can make them super schools, what can be the X factor of it, is why they really chose that. And the founders of XQ are Russell Inolli, who was secretary, education secretary for Obama, and then, which we were just speaking of, and Lorraine Powell Jobs, who is Steve Jobs's widow. So, and I got to tell you, just as a side note, we go to design camps a couple of days a month, and they're run in the same facet of the think tanks like Google or Apple. When we are sitting there with 20 other schools, it's mind-blowing, the level of capacity. So when they talk about the IQ and the EQ equals the XQ they deliver at that rate.
It's incredible. Thanks. So we're going to, this is a little bit of the agenda for tonight. We're going to fly through some of this stuff for reasons of time, but I gave you guys the entire presentation that we actually did with the community design group, as well as the teacher design group, and have repeated this kind of iteration because the, one of the most important things that we are tasked with to do is to hear from everybody. Not just teachers, not just parents, you know, community members that are here all the time, but really reach out to all students from one end of the spectrum to the other, as well as parents that you hear from, parents that you don't, everyone in between, community partners, school committee. So we really want to hear from everybody. Thanks, Ryan. And what our final product that we're going to build is going to look like is a school design. We'll have a pilot portfolio, which basically shows all the iterations of our school designs. We've gotten how they've changed, on implementation plan for three years, and the VIVI, which is the stakeholder innovation portfolio, which we're going to have your help on that tonight as well. So, not going to do this whole video, but we're going to play just a little bit of it, Brian, so we can get an idea and get a little mood if this is where work is going. Thank you. You get the idea on that. So we are designing, we are, we are teaching children that jobs to be prepared for jobs that don't exist yet. That's the bottom line, the jobs that just really don't exist yet. So what is our XQ RI challenge journey? I'll let you guys, because you all have the printouts, if we can get this a little bit bigger. This book just basically takes us from where we started to where we're going to end up. We just completed Design Camp 3, which is the bottom right-hand corner. That's where we are in the process right now, where we're beginning to design. But all along the way, we're still getting feedback, insight, interviews, focus groups, surveys, and so on, that we'll be getting a lot more information from. Go ahead, Ryan. Thank you. And that's what our journey is going to look like when everything is all said and done. It's a very messy journey. Because the more we, the more we learn, then it gets blurry again, and it goes off track. But ultimately, we want to end up in the perfect place at the end. And we're going to skip over this. It's a beautiful video, very inspiring if you wanted to watch it on your own. If you would give an email to the presentation. But it's important for us to remember why we're doing what it is that we're doing. And you have these statements that are here, and I'm going to turn it over to Liz to do the first act, thanks activity.
So Dr. Fiasi has kind of been talking about why we need to redesign high school. And the whole idea is that the world today is very different than it's going to be in 10, 15, 30 years from now. Also, we need to be able to prepare students for, like she said, a world, but we don't really know what that's going to look like yet. And so if you could press the next slide, please? Thank you. We have a little activity for you. You know, you've been sitting for a little bit, so if you're going to be catching us up, we don't know. On the tables in front of you, you have some cards that look like this, or some papers that look like this. Okay? And... Yes, and you guys will look at each other's cards that look like this. Some of them are black, some of them are gray. And we'd like for you guys to take a few minutes, get up and move around, and start kind of perusing the information that's in, that is on the material in front of you. Right? Just kind of take it in, read through some of the information that's on those cards and what the world is going to look like for our students in a few years.
And it's all different, by the way.
Yeah, go ahead.
So what's in front of you is not necessarily what's in front of Mr. Remo, so Mr. Saviano. So we want you to get up and kind of pick and choose, just pick a piece of paper. A lot of research that's there, a lot of information. But we're going to invite the community to participate. If you like it as well, you can come on up and start looking at some of the information.
Well, I'm not. It's scary.
Oh, thank you. You're welcome. You're going to bring some. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for doing your part. Yeah. Yeah, they're kind of doing all this now, so. All right, that's good. Thank you.
You're going to get tested on this. Side activity, I'm just telling you, please don't talk in here. Don't talk in side activity, I'm talking shortly. Trust me. So you have about three minutes left.
I know.
Two minutes and 30 seconds.
Okay, in five, four, three, two... And one.
So as you kind of get back to your seats, I know that some of you have sort of been chatting already about what you saw on your tables, but talk to the person or people around you, what stuck out to you most about the information you read on these cards? And then, why do you think we should reimagine high school? What do you think that, what are your hopes for a reimagined Mount Hope? What do you want for our kids in this? Okay, so take a couple minutes, talk to the people around you about that.
We're gonna move on, and I do need to tell you that... I can't tell them to be quiet. Can't tell you to be quiet.
Sorry. It's okay.
So, these activities are activities that could be done over the course of a seven-hour and eight-hour day. We're giving you a taste of the activities and even the research that you're looking at. It's literally a drop in the bucket to the amount of research that we've received, we've read, we've dealt into. It's literally a drop in the bucket. In this presentation, there's a link to one of the sets of executive knowledge modules that gets into a lot more deeper research as well, but this really just kind of gives you a taste of the type of research that we've done nationwide, internationally, as well as locally, and that we've collected a lot of data, received a lot of data specifically about Mount Hope High School as well. So, Brian, if you don't mind. Yes, let's keep going. This is the knowledge modules I was just referring to. We're not gonna jump into it now, but that's a link directly to them. You can explore as little or as much as you like. And, okay, so, basically, what we have done is with all of the research that we've gathered, the data that we've collected, we've done student interviews, family interviews, community interviews, gotten feedback, all of the information that we've gotten, we are synthesizing and resynthesizing into what's called insight statements, that are, as it says here, they articulate important truths that emerge from our research and should shape our design. That's the piece that we really need to keep in mind. I have great ideas. I dreamed it, I always have, but are my ideas aligned to our insight statements, which really identify what the needs of the school are, and the students, and our community? Those are things that we need to keep in mind. So what we are gonna do is, again, we're gonna ask you to get up, you know, walk over there to the insight statements, and these are a work in progress, and will continue to be revised, probably until we submit our final product. The more information we get, the more we refine them, that squiggles the messy lines. So I'm gonna ask you guys to, we've got post-its in front of you. If anybody needs a pen, let us know, we have extra pens. We're gonna ask you to take a peek at the insight statements, and using the post-its, write any comments, if the statements should be refined, do you agree, should they be added to, are they just right based on your knowledge and research that you have, of what it is that you know? Or just making comments that you agree, anything like that? So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven insight statements here. And we're gonna ask you to just take a minute, read each one, make a comment, or two, or three, on your post-its. Again, you guys are welcome to participate, we have player post-its. Nobody's gonna get you on camera, I promise, well, maybe I don't. And, go.
Here's some stickies. Brian?
Wow.
Are you sure? Yes. I was anxious, you're right there, we were gonna try to spread the heart, but... Right on it.
Make a course correction, because this is a wide launch, and failure is not... I don't know, right, in college? And then do a different job, be a great master. I get that. So, they're not in a, children need a partner. I agree, they don't have the life experience. They don't necessarily have the life experiences to understand the goal, to help, is what they have to do, and wanting to transcend ancient history and hate interminable, and I get over it, you need to know this, you don't just take it to get, you just get it done, because they just have to get it done.
If you've gotten through all the insight statements, you might have seen...
Yeah, I mean, it's furious. It's furious. But that's what you're seeing in front of you, whether it's a computer or an iPhone is exciting all the time. So you don't get the excitement all in one fall, and you don't go across. And then you get a Saturday detention. Damn, that's what happens. And you don't understand why.
They do, they don't... I did. Frederick Dax Turner.
Welcome to World's Best Stairs Breakfast. That's so beautiful, I like that. Oh, yeah. You want it all. I would get a pause after a while, you know, watch it.
All right, so we're gonna wrap you up in just a second. And do you get a chance to do it? Okay, you got plenty more. Where I came from?
Right, and what happened? But just some things, you know, some kids are blocking, and they're...
All right, we're gonna move on. Just 'cause I was like, you wanna stay here, all right? So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna just take about, if anybody wants to share out briefly, any comments or things like that, we're only gonna bring it, it may just in time, we'll take like three comments, or thoughts about the insight statements, or things that were an aha moment, or something that resonated with you, so we'll do just like three comments afterwards. Anybody? Anyone wanna jump in?
Yeah, I would, because I already did one. A lot of my answers say we're fine, and the reason they say we're fine is that children in high school don't have the life experiences that the people sitting in this room do. And so we need, I think that you need to narrow it down, to explain exactly what it is that you're looking for, and I'm not so sure that they always quite know that. So I'd like to see, as I said to you, and said to some other people, my children with advanced degrees don't even have jobs in the area where their degrees are. Our children need to be able to have that same experience, but it needs to be controlled, because they're in high school, they're not in college, and let's make sure that they get that free flow. That's it.
Who else?
The statement regarding student success in ninth grade determines the rest of high
Thank you. More broadly, and looking at the insight statements. And I guess, I'll preface this by saying, I'm not 100% certain how the insight statements are used in the process that you're doing. So it's entirely possible that this is a step that is being done someplace else. But what I was thinking is that most of them, maybe with the exception of recognize the identity one, are observations perhaps that come from the research of data that's been reviewed. And what I found myself thinking as I was reading them is what is the action step from these insight statements?
Which I do, I do next.
Okay. And whether the insight statements should potentially be edited or revised to state the problem that, what we, what the problems that we need to solve in an active way, as opposed to just a statement of whatever the data actually says.
Yes, spot on, Mr. Rabel, spot on. I agree with that. Exactly. And these are going to be used to create a design, a design taking many things into consideration, including that, and they will be written and rewritten as almost how might we? Statements, how might we design a learning experiences? Where all students can form their identity and so on and so forth. So you should join our team.
Okay. Come on.
Okay, great. So we're gonna move, we're gonna move on. And this is a draft, actually our third draft. And after the insight statements for one second, Jacque was here who attests to the fact that these were about this big, each one of them, that we've already kind of refined them and will continue that process. And this is the third iteration of our old idea, or want to call it our vision, mission-ish thing, you know, missions have weird connotations. But this is one of those pieces that we'll be continuing to refine. And then I'm gonna turn this over to Nikki in a second. But the other things that you want to keep in mind that we've done a lot of work around when we're designing is equity. Making sure that all students have access and opportunity. We're designing learning experiences. It should include all students. Are highly motivated, are disengaged, and everybody in between. And we've done a lot of work around making sure that we're examining equity, our own personal conscious and unconscious biases, things like that. And when we design, I'll let you read it yourself. I'll turn it over to Nikki. So you have design, we have equity, and then if you talk about... You put those two things together, and this is what we shoot for. So you think that the DMV was designed with equity to address all of us and our needs? Maybe for some. Right? And there are those that think that the design with the middle seat in the airplane is just perfectly fine, and there are those that might not. I'm not the person who likes to sit in the middle. Maybe there are some. Go ahead, Ryan. And I'm gonna turn it over to Nikki.
We're jumping into the...
Yep, we're gonna do a design sprint, a design challenge.
So we're gonna get you working again. And to do this, it would be helpful if you take a little second and think about who you are, all of the parts of your identity that make you who you are. I say this because it's important that you come at this, obviously, with your school committee member perspective, but also, are you parents? Are you grandparents? Are you business owners? Are you employed? Are you retired? Are you unemployed? And did your parents go to college? Did you go to college? Were you the first person in your family to go to college? These are all the things that make up who you are. What are your belief systems? And so just keep in mind all of those parts of your identity as we move into this. And you're gonna need to stand up again and pick up your post-it notes. And this, the same thing is true for everybody here. And there are no rules. I'm going to intentionally maybe not give a ton of instruction or a ton of direction because I want you to think outside of the box, be creative. There are no rules. There is no right or wrong answer. And we can move forward. Please. What you are gonna do now is design a student experience, a student learning experience. What we have on here behind Mrs. Schofield, we have four learning, these are our four learning goals that we want for our students up here behind. And we can move forward.
One more. It looks like this. If you would like to see them a little bit more in detail.
And one more again would be great. So what we have here are these how might we statements. If you want to take a second and look at those, and again, thinking up on the screen, thinking about all of these parts of your identity that make you who you are, pick one of these. Pick one of these how might we. Now we're getting into the solutions, into the sort of problem-solving piece. So keeping, pick one of these how might we statements. Keep in mind our equity insight statements that you guys just spent some time reading. And think of a creative student learning experience. Write it on your post-it note. It can be a couple of words, it can be a couple of sentences. Think about how you might answer these questions. And then, looking at the learning goals, put the post-its up there. Some of the ideas you have may answer one learning goal, some may answer all, in which case just put it right in the middle. Some may answer a few, whatever you want to do. So what we are going to do is answer one of these how might we statements, keeping in mind our insight statements and matching them to our learning goals. How long are we gonna have?
This is called a design sprint tonight.
Called a sprint for a reason.
We could spend much more time, and it does not necessarily have to be an academic learning experience. It could be a student experience.
Could be. Could be any learning experience for the student. Academic, inside the classroom, outside, with the community, any learning experience. There are no rules for redesigning. And the five learning goals. No. The color doesn't matter.
Do you think it's kind of all the reading, writing, and the tip of each individual, their trade, their college, their life type?
Write as many as you want.
Wait, yeah. You can just jot that.
It's supposedly kind of...
Nope.
And they were.
I think not everybody can make a tackle.
Does everybody have an opportunity to get their ideas down on paper? Get them up on the post-it? Okay, we're gonna wrap up, and we're literally only about five minutes away from being done.
Thank you guys so much for participating. And I wanted to clarify quickly where it comes to the insight statements. They, we are imagining with full creativity. I wore my unicorn sweater to the last design camp. That's how hard we're imagining to believe in magic. But, but we are, we are basing, we, the data that we were presented with and that we studied for a day exposed equity gaps in our school, specifically in our school. And so what the dream that we're having and this sort of new school that we're imagining is based on closing those equity gaps. So we're dreaming big, but it is with a very specific goal in mind. Back to the sort of the data about ninth grade, that came from hard facts, and that is an equity gap that we're looking to close with this, with these dreams. So do we want to share out? Does it say two people? Anybody want to share maybe what they put on their post-it?
One idea, two ideas?
Mr. Fenda, move forward.
Over here, over there, or doesn't matter?
Doesn't matter. No, no, Mr. Mantle, I'm sorry.
I gotta go over there.
Yeah, could we share out when you broke your...
I'm not that petty, really.
Your how might we?
All right, so for... I put up a couple here. So for lifelong learners, I said that students should identify themselves with a certain individual or industry or hobby of interest. And let's face it, sometimes you don't always get the job you want. It's all about the responsibility at the time. If you've got kids, a wife, or a husband to take care of, then you're gonna have to do whatever you have to do. But by doing that, you strongly continue the learning process. Because once you identify yourself with something you want to emulate or an industry you want to add into, to build on, really, whatever is at that time you set up 10, 20 years from now that you want to have even the smallest impact on improving it, it will require additional learning, and that's what you do. And truly, we all want to do what we love to do. So if it is a hobby, unfortunately, or if it is an industry in which you are really spearheading, life is good. We know this is where you're going.
Thank you.
Is that enough? You want to...
Does anybody else want to share out one of theirs?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good?
I just would like to...
I think they're thinking about it. Somebody's thinking, it could wait.
The other job.
Mr. Savianno?
Well, I'm gonna tell you something that maybe doesn't even fit, okay? I'm that kind of a guy, you know that. My father died, when I started applying college, my father died two weeks after I started college. And so I was in a four-year program. And because my father died, he had taught me that you have to, you have to do real stick-to-itiveness. And so I actually designed a study program for myself that I was able to do four years of college in two years, so that I could get back out into industry and support, help to support my family. And it worked out very well for me. I don't know if that has any meaning to you.
It absolutely does, absolutely. That's your learning experience.
I just want to say too, one of the other people on our core design team is Ken Blue, and he also, he's our employer representative from FM Global. So I just want to also clarify that we also have an employer partner as well that's out there, you know, working on that as too. That's it.
Yeah, in terms of lifelong, lifelong learner, one of the things that I think about, and I put it both here and there, is this idea, back to Mrs. Savianno's point about, you know, sort of self, you know, self-paced. I just think that this idea that a student comes to us and stays for four years is part of the problem. If you can do all your coursework and you're really focused and you can do it in two years, why wouldn't we let you? And then make sure that you've got post-secondary certificate, college admission, something to go to. Or if you need five years instead of four, I just think that the more self-paced would be really, because there are gonna be some kids that are like, I'm trying to get out of here as quickly as possible. I actually know what I want to do and full speed ahead. There are gonna be some other kids that maybe need a little bit more time and some in between.
You know, the other thing I was thinking too is if each school district looked at what was around geographic, so certain type of jobs, certain industry, maybe that would be a good plug and play in to what Dr. Bryce said. Maybe there's a standard number of classes you gotta take, but beyond that, it's really this specialist position, a certification of some sort. Because it's all focused on resume, though. That's the focus. But if you come in and, let's say Bristol-Lawrie becomes a special team role builder, for example, then people across, really the country, could potentially come in. Like some students go to Mount St. Charles to play hockey, because that's one of the best hockey high schools in the nation, right? So why couldn't you do that? And then through that, maybe offer a host family type program? And then you can pull them in, you know, depending on what your specialty is. Maybe that's one way. I hosted international students, and it was really cool to do that. But if, if you host, then maybe your student, your child can go to another place where maybe they go to a high school with more focus specialty on what they really love and enjoy.
I have something to say real quick. I, I was thinking about this, supporting students as lifelong learners. And what came into my head was that maybe the first step in that is to teach kids that learning isn't necessarily sitting in a classroom and learning in that way. So I talked about, on my post-it notes about, you know, like making learning more, I guess, engaging so that students will understand that lifelong learning isn't about just sitting and studying or, you know, acing a test or going to get, you know, your undergraduate degree, your master's, your PhD. It's about like also sitting down and collaborating with people and coming up with all of the questions and all of the ideas and, and putting them all out on the table and seeing where that goes. And that's, in my life, what lifelong learning is and what leads to innovation. So it's so, it's been so rewarding tonight to think about all of this stuff.
It's really exciting. Really, it's been really exciting every time we're talking about it. And it's on my mind 24/7, every single day, every minute of every day. And it's amazing how, as many times as we do this, and we're gonna continue to do it, and we're gonna ask you to do it as well in a moment, and I'm gonna give you some homework. We're hearing a lot of the same themes, a lot of the same, you know, kinds of ideas that are coming out of all of the work. So it really, the process is working, let's put it that way. Nikki, you wanted to clarify something about what you did, you're all set? All right. Ryan, do you mind? So keep going one more time, keep going one more time. And we're gonna skip this part, this will be our next steps, because what we're gonna do is continue to build, keep going. We're gonna jump right to the end. We're gonna start testing designs. I told you I was gonna make a little one. And we're gonna continue doing these cycles every time we come up with a new idea, new design, and then one more time. So ultimately, the goal is to flesh out an entire student journey from freshman to senior. We're gonna actually come up with an actual design that will be composed of several, many model student experiences, some over the course of a course maybe, or a grade, or spanning four years. But ultimately, we'll flesh out an entire student journey. And then it's gonna be back and forth. One more? Okay, so what we would like you to do, because you are now designers and researchers, is you looked at some of your, these cards that are here that are really questions for you to ask anybody. Students, families, parents, graduates, grandparents. And what we'd like you to do, so for examples, get into your imagination, build your dream school. What would it look like? What it would be like to go there? What kind of future would it prepare you for, your dream school? There are cards that are labeled your passion. Think of a question you would like to, oh, never mind, that's a thing of a question you'd like to ask. Yes. Instead of passion cards, we're gonna do... Make your question. Finish the sentence. I feel alive when? I feel alive when? So we're gonna ask you, to the extent possible, talk to anybody and everybody that you can. Document whatever makes it easiest for you. You can handwrite it, take a video of it, audio, type it. It doesn't matter, we'll take whatever we can get. You can even record your own, you know, things. And we're gonna ask you to send them to us. I'm sorry. And we're gonna ask you to send them to us. Nikki is taking all of the information and synthesizing it from all of the many interviews and focus groups and meetings like this and post-its, and we're compiling all of that information and gathering and putting it all together. So, Nikki, you can take the cards with you if you want, or you can write your own questions. We've got plenty more cards, I've got plenty more cards too. So we're gonna ask you to do that. But please, when you take, document, include what the person's role is. Are they a student? Are they a parent? What was the question you asked and the responses? We wanna, we don't want to know names, but kind of descriptions of the space.
Student, parent, community member, employer, just kind of giving us a lens. And feel free to ask as many different people, as many lenses, help us really be able to simulate this and really bring in something that everybody has buy-in. We want sustainability, we want everybody's buy-in to be able to really make this amazing impactful opportunity of the life. So thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Great job, folks.
Thank you. Nikki wants to take the cards, because there's more cards here.
Thank you all so much. Thank you Nikki and Shayna and Liz and Dr. Deb. That was amazing. I'm really excited that we have homework. That is the dirty side of me coming out. But I think it's really exciting, and so we will make sure to get that information back to all. Thank you so, so much for all you're doing on this project. It's really exciting.
Thank you. Thank you for your participation and feedback. You guys can feel free to take some cards, we'll take information from you all as well. That would be amazing, so.